I want to call the order. The City of Dunellen Special City Council Budget Workshop on August 21st, 2023. Would everybody please stand for the pledge.
For the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Have a moment of silence. Roll, we call Mandy.
Mayor Dunn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anske.
Here.
Councilperson Mendon.
Here.
Councilman Levan.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Chad Ward, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Julie Denow, State Records Clerk.
Here.
Chief Stan Will.
Here.
And we do not have any council present tonight. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on 2015-2023, and amended on August 21 to add backup to Agenda Item Number One.
All right. I have a question. In a budget meeting, should we take up the matter of Ms. Cabbage, or do we wait?
You can. Really, all you have to do is just acknowledge her resignation, that you received it.
Okay.
And it's just-
I just didn't know if this meeting was appropriate to do.
It's just an acknowledgement. So long as you do it in a public forum, it doesn't have to be a formal council meeting.
Okay. Um, everybody, I think, knows that we received Jan Cabbage's resignation last Wednesday night. It was passed around, and as we've acknowledged, we now have it. And I guess next meeting, we'll discuss the procedure on how, what we do about replacing her on the council. Okay. All right, Jan, you want to talk about the budget, this latest version?
Yes, sir. Um, counsel, I kind of took a little bit of shortcut this time around. I didn't give you the budget summary, that long document with all the supplemental schedules, because I just thought it was redundant, and we're still possibly making changes. So I tried to give you a condensed version of differences. Mandy, if you could put up the difference schedule. And I gave you some broad descriptions as far as what changed. There were many, again, I shouldn't say many, but several other smaller changes, like I took out Santa in the park, things like that. But these are the biggest things. We did get the insurances in, so they're pretty much up to date. I'm still waiting on maybe a couple of very small changes. That will happen to the general insurance. I did detail it out in this version, like I had been asked to do. And the one big revenue that I was waiting for came in $31,000 less than anticipated, which really brought it back to normal amounts. So I was surprised, yet I shouldn't. I guess I shouldn't have been. I still ended up, and as I was directed last time, if you look on line number, where is it? Uh, well, I don't have a line number next to Rosen Streets. It's in between line 30 and 31. I did establish the road reserve. We have a surplus of $111,586. Now, I know that, and we'll talk about this a little further, but I don't think we're quite done with the budget. So I wouldn't want necessarily, I don't think, a decision really should be made on a firm millage rate. I know it was discussed, if it came in $100,000, Wally, you had said, put $50,000 in a road reserve, you could still do that, and then I could take whatever I need from that, which would reduce the road reserve. I did calculate some millage rates. Um, if, let's see, let's go to one. If we go to not the rollback rate, but if we would lower the millage rate to 5.9 from 6.3, that takes away $90,408. Now, the dollars aren't going to be exact, but this is what I calculated at this point in time. They will fluctuate a little bit, because I'm using Excel to calculate this, where Trim has their own database they use, so there is going to be a little bit of a difference, not much. If you go to a 6.0 millage rate, you reduce that more by 67,133. If you go to a 6.05 millage rate, you reduce it almost $56,000. And then 6.1, you reduce it by about $44,000. So it can be reduced based on the surplus. I do have another schedule I would like to show you, but I want to get through, maybe talking about any further changes you all might want to see, or any questions that you have, before we get to the millage rate.
Jan, what are you showing for surplus right now?
And again, I do expect some changes, at least for insurances. I'm not sure what else may-
Jan, did this get printed out for them, this document?
Yes, I sent it to them.
Okay. Is that the top of the second page?
And what I'm showing, how I show that, is it's in Chad's budget, but it's not a true expense. It's at the very, it's one of the very last lines that just helps increase reserves. He's already got a couple things in there, that his 5% gas tax is going to reserve. That also came in less than I anticipated. The few revenues that I was waiting on came in less. The biggest one, of course, is that $31,000.
And what insurances are we still waiting on?
Property insurance. I had a question that hasn't been answered yet, just a couple hundred dollars. I have taken off vehicles, they're shown on the property auto schedule right now, because they hadn't been removed, but vehicles we just surplused.
Right.
That I, maybe 25 have been sold, so I just took them off today. But I reduced the property schedule for those vehicles. Mandy indicated by October 1, they're going to be off.
Right.
So my property schedule does differ from what is actually in the budget, my auto schedule, I'm sorry. So if I get rid of that-
So basically, the insurances that we're waiting on are neg, the insurance changes are negligible?
I believe so, yes. Couple hundred dollars, maybe. So I'll entertain any questions you might have on any of the data that you might have looked at. We've pretty much talked this to death. We were just waiting on things that really went beyond our control at this point. But Tim, all your changes, you know, recommendations have been incorporated. So the budgets have changed, as you can see by the differences.
Okay. Can I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Where we talked, where we had four people removed from the health insurance, two needed to go back on.
That's been done. There's also been one new thing, I'm sorry not to interrupt, but there's a health incentive that was added into the budget.
Right.
That has been added in.
Right.
If you want to talk about that, or if you want me to talk about it.
You can. Let me pull it up real quick, that's a little bit more, you know. Okay, so everybody for Public Works. Except one who's not taking the insurance. All the police are in for health insurance. So there's somebody else somewhere?
Helen.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Two people are not taking health insurance at this time.
So two are reflecting the incentive?
Yes.
And the other two are back, the budget is showing full health?
Correct.
Cool, okay. If you want to explain the incentive, I'll keep, I'll go ahead.
The health incentive, what was proposed for those two employees that are not taking our insurance, Mandy had talked about it at the last workshop. The amount that is being proposed is $5,000, like a $5,000 bonus. It will not affect retirement. It will, it does affect payroll taxes that the city pays. So it's, well, more than $5,000, $5,000 expense to the city because of taxes.
And that was something that I spoke to for Tim when he was absent from the workshop. That was something that he had brought forward, and I brought you some information that I had gotten from some other cities. And then, so it's really up to the council. Tim's suggestion was 5,000, and what we saw other cities were paying was significantly less. I think it was $2,600 a year, that was the max that the other cities were paying out of that premium that they were saving. And I also have been talking with our insurance agent, who is going to give us some additional information before we actually write that into a policy, because it has to be established by resolution. So there are some, a little bit of quirky, complicated things surrounding health insurance and doing this, but we just need to be aware of all of these things before we implement a policy, so that you all are fully understand any implications, and the employees fully understand any implications by establishing this kind of policy.
So, excuse me, so you're saying we're going to increase each one of them 5,000?
Mm-hmm.
Because I remember like 2,500, that's really kind of shocked me. I thought that was maybe both of them.
Well, that was the-
But I know that's less than what it costs.
Right.
It's significantly less than what-
It's 11K versus 5,000, so it's actually a-
I couldn't remember what the premium was, but I know it was a lot more.
Right. And what we did to math, it was $5,365, I think, with the payroll taxes. And then you subtract that from the $11,092, and the remainder was like $5,700. That was the difference. So whether they took the insurance, you'd be paying the entire $11,092, and if they don't-
So it actually stops the taxpayers, unless you had a word, it actually stops us from taking about $10,000 more from the taxpayers, while the employee gets this incentive benefit for those who can use it. And, um, and so basically, what we did was we split it in half, okay, with the, well, I said, I didn't believe her on it.
No, I just remembered, much smaller number, but I don't have a problem with it.
Um, that's really about it that I have to speak to before we get into talking about millage rates, because the next meeting is your first public hearing. I have to prepare resolutions for a tentative millage rate, as well as a skit for you, Wally, to conduct that hearing, because there's some very specific language that needs to be said at specific times. So that's why I'm really focused on as close as we can get tonight. It can change. Between now and the end of September, it just can't go up.
Right.
But it can change.
Right.
So I don't want you to think, you know, your hands are going to be tied after tonight. They're absolutely not. Especially if the budget should change further by any, anything else that comes my way from anywhere at this point. We're pretty much wrapped up, though, and this is where we should be by now. The $200 I'm expecting from our property insurer, it's negligible, it's only because they hadn't issued formal renewals, and they were going off some other document. I guess from two different sources. So again, it's very small.
What I remember from the last meeting, the number was about $140,000, that's $111, so about $30,000 was all that insurance stuff.
That coupled with my $30,000 decrease in communication service tax. So, yeah, it's, things increased, and then the decrease, I mean, it really offset each other. Insurance, the insurance actually, overall, for general liability, cyber liability, auto, property, as well as work comp, there was only a 28% increase. Now, property did increase 65%. Remember, I had said they were estimating 75%. And what I, the only thing I could do was take everybody's insurance line and bump it up that 70%. So it brought things down a lot, because auto was included in that, and as well as the cyber liability, so it wasn't a true reflection of just property. But I had no other way to do what I did. So now we've got a true reflection. But general and professional liability increased 10%, cyber liability 3.2%, auto increased about 7% or 8%, property 65%, work comp about 20%. So all in all, a 28% overall increase in our insurance is pretty good. I know you're, it really is good compared to what was out there, and when everybody was, you know, screaming and hollering how their insurance was going up.
And property, I assume, has to do with hurricanes and all this other mess.
Oh, of course.
I mean, that's it. That's really mine. I mean, my car didn't.
And the cost to replace, you know, if something happens due to a fire.
Right, right, got it. Okay.
Other than that, I-
Do you have anything else, Tim?
Yeah, I got a few items on my list.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to mention two things here, need to get into the budget. We need a cost for the police department generator transfer switch, and we need a cost for emergency generator. I think Chad's working on that with an electrical contractor. So the two items-
As for police?
For the police department building, right.
So on a generator, is there somewhere we go through them, state bidding-wise, or surplus for a generator, if we look at prices for that?
Right, I'm guessing there is, especially listening to Ron. Seems like he has a handle on something out there. Probably the toughest one is going to be, I mean, generator's going to be whatever generator costs, easy enough. Toughest one you got is getting somebody in there to figure out a transfer switch for us.
I just really need that within the next week.
What's that?
I really need that as soon as possible, because I got to get all these documents prepared for the hearing.
Is that something Ringpower, that say maintenance of our generators would be able to help us?
They would. I know Ron was checking, because there was some state funding.
Very good, there's a government surplus where he got all generated from for Citrus County. So he's trying to get the police department to reply for that, and then we'll be able to go for those things. So I don't know, I'm not able to hit a, a week deadline.
Yeah.
So I'll get it with Ron, I know.
And maybe if it's a little more in the budget, if we talk with Ringpower, and even if that goes in the budget and we can save some money, you know, then I doubt there'll be that big a difference. There could be. I shouldn't say I doubt, but-
I mean, what are you guys hearing?
What's that?
On generators, what are you hearing in the cost?
I haven't heard anything on that.
Oh, you haven't? My neighbor just put one in. He put it in with a propane system for the whole house, with the tank buried, and he said it was about 15.
Well, this is what we have, a commercial generator.
Yeah.
And these are diesel.
Yeah, Ron, I was like, what did this one cost?
Oh, boy, we've had this forever.
Okay.
Haven't seen anything on them, just made these contracts.
Okay. Yeah, I would think if you want one like that, it's going to be a lot more.
So if we're going to talk millage rate, we need to kind of-
Yeah, I know.
Delete this, you know, leave me some money.
Okay, so we got a switch, and we got a generator and a switch, right?
Well, just a generator and a transfer switch that has to go on the building.
Right.
Do we want to look at the tie-in from the FD's system also as a part of that?
Right, I was saying, let's research both, I was thinking. We'll see which way it comes out.
I don't know if that's where we're looking. I almost would like an electrician to come in and look at our box.
It's supposed to be wanting to come in.
Right, yeah, no, this is not, yeah, this is going to be a real electrical contractor coming to look at all that. Right.
Yes.
Just tell him I'm screaming at you, you need figures.
So that cost is still not in here?
No.
Correct.
No, there isn't even a guesstimate in here.
All right.
And the last two items I have are additions that I didn't get into over the weekend. One is just a name change, and then another's a line item that we're going to reduce from 3K to 1K.
Well, which, point me in the right direction.
Okay, it's, the numbers are 01541.
Okay, hold on, let me get to Rosen Streets. Okay.
30460.
Hair maintenance, okay.
Reduce the 3K to 1K.
Which 3K? I've got two 3Ks.
Oh, I see that you do. The one that says tractor, mower, tractor, bush hog repairs?
Do you want that reduced?
The 1K. The one above that that says aerial lift?
Mm-hmm.
We just want to replace aerial lift with tractor in the description.
Instead of aerial lift truck, tractor repairs?
Yeah, get rid of the, right, scratch out aerial lift truck, and then put in tractor.
Then did we solve it?
No, the value is still the same. No, we didn't, we needed a line item to keep our tractor broke down on us, and realized we really didn't have a line item in there, so we worked, we found a line item, the money was actually under another line item, so we duplicated it, but that makes us be 2,000 heavy, because we're double dipping. So this will take care of the description, and it will take care of the double dipping.
Okay. So that puts the surplus aside from the generator items at $113,000.
And for general fund, that's all I have.
Did you have any comments from this time to last?
Well, I, I do have one, I'll just ask it, it's budget in general, just because it was pointed out to me. A lot of, we've been talking a lot about the Blue Run Back, and I looked at the papers that were sent out, it's $671,000. And I build houses, and I just finished a house over in Bellevue with the builder over there. It's 60, it's a 2,500 square foot house, custom house, 10-foot ceilings, and they're building the whole house with a lot for $347,000. And we're spending $675,000 for basically a 20-by-25 bathroom.
We're not, the county is.
I know, but we have to make a proportion of it.
Yes.
We have 225K, and when the number goes above that, the way that the documents read is, is we will be on the hook for anything that goes over. To add to that just a little bit, I've discovered there's been conversations from us between the state and the county to actually move the tuber takeout north towards the state takeout.
Right. But you see my question, why is it costing almost four times for a 20-by-20 bathroom that's basically a slab, four walls, a roof, and some plumbing, $671,000? I mean, could we go back to the state and say, listen, we'll build the bathroom?
We don't-
It's not the state, it's the county.
No.
They're the ones that are building the bathroom, and we're contributing.
Okay.
Based on a design that council picked.
Okay.
Unless that design has been modified and on, off that track a little bit.
Okay.
That would be a county question.
Yeah. No, you don't understand what, why I'm asking, I mean, this is like, because we have to pay a portion of it, and the portion of it is probably greater than if somebody was building on their property, could be-
Right, yeah. When we get to CRA, I'll give you my recommendation.
And part of the thing is, you know, cities and counties have certain requirements, certain requirements of contractors-
Right.
That a home builder doesn't.
Oh, okay.
You know, we require you carry insurance.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how much that would cost. It probably wouldn't add that much into the cost of the job, but just things like that.
Yeah.
So everything that a government requires of a contractor is going to increase the cost.
Okay, I just asked.
Not too long ago, all the documents were sent out around Blue Run Park, including the bathroom. You can go through those documents, and you can see step by step how it got to where it's at.
Okay.
And you can also see the unknowns that the city will be on the hook for also. And if you can't find them, I'm sure you can reach out to managing and bump them back out again to you. But they're very enlightening.
There was about $200,000 of that total cost was just the utilities, because they had to put in a lift station or something out there. I think a significant portion of that cost was attributed to utilities.
Oh, yeah, just got for a lift.
I don't think the-
Utilities, engineering, the building went from 200-something until our past mayor and citizen, doesn't live in Dunellen, sat with the county, they wanted an extravagant building, and you're going to read this in that document, and it more than doubled the price of the building. Okay? And then again, you'll see everything that we're on the hook with, and then think of everything, if it was your business, your house, that you know are expenditures, that we're on the hook for. And it says right in there, if the, this is, this is simply an estimate, and if it goes any further, the City of Dunellen will reach into their pockets and take care of that. So that whole thing needs to be addressed, one point.
And that's not, that's not signed and agreed upon, that was just a memo understanding, right?
That was a, yeah.
So we'd have to formally agree.
Right. It was an MOU that was not signed by the county and state. That's the only thing that actually helps us discuss this further.
And we're starting to get a meeting moving up. Right now, I think it might be September, but we still haven't got a confirmation of it.
Wally, I missed three things on the general-
On the what?
On the general fund.
Okay. Well, I got one, but you go ahead.
I can go in.
No. You keep going.
Jan, I missed these three. For IT stuff.
IT?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's spread out throughout the budget, you know, it presents to certain departments. There's an item in there, and it's under IT also, Western NRG Firewall Support, total of $1,300. We had a meeting with Andy, that's supposed to get removed.
First I've heard of it.
I understand.
I completely forgot about that, and not communicated with Jan. I only went through what was on our spreadsheet, I had notes.
Right, right, no, I understand, did the same thing, I had my IT paper off to the side, and I forgot to bring it in.
Yeah, I had the notes on the IT spreadsheet.
Right.
Didn't I?
Did the same thing. That's $1,300. And again, it's spread out, you know, it's percents throughout the budget. When you're ready for the next one, holler, Jan.
I'm ready.
There's Artemis SSL Certificates.
Wait a minute. Artemis, that's throughout the budget, too.
Correct. And now, it's SSL Certificates.
Okay.
Okay, because there's other Artemis stuff in there. It's a total of 550.
550.
Yes, ma'am. That one, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um.
You only got one more, that's all you're allowed.
Right. Okay, this one here, we spoke with Andy, RMM software in your latest budget report is showing be removed, and it's showing replaced with cybersecurity, as Andy said, but in that, it says that it's a security, that there's a grant for that. I don't see the revenue side anymore.
We don't get revenue from it. It's all being done at that- We don't get revenue from it, it's, it's all being done at the state level, and they're doing the work and paying for it. So there's nothing that's coming to the city for me to show there's revenue. We're not gonna get any money from it. That's the only way I can show revenue is if we receive funds.
Okay, and then...
And yes, there's a grant, which Andy is, knows about the grant, I don't know any of the details, 'cause I just don't understand.
We're gonna look at the coding and stuff, it looks like we're asking for three, basically, it's twenty-nine oh nine is what it is, so three thousand dollars. It looks like we're asking for, when we do our taxes, it looks like we're asking for three thousand dollars for the taxpayers for this line item, but it's already being paid for.
That's, Andy put that in here, so if you're telling me to remove it, I will, but I can't put revenue in the budget since we're not receiving any money.
This is for the RMM software?
That's what Tim says.
Replacing it. In the previous report, it was always RMM, software support.
It's not replacing it in the budget, it's, the RMM can come out because the, the new software that we're getting
Okay.
from the grant
Uh huh.
will provide that capability, that the RMM software.
Okay.
So we're not taking that out and put something else in, and it's not a reimbursable grant. It's just a grant that the states come in and said, we're gonna do all this for you for free.
Okay, right now, in this, in the budget report that is in front of us today.
How much is the RMM?
RMM, RMM has been removed.
Okay.
Okay, what is in place of it is cybersecurity, like we spoke about. But it has an expenditure of twenty-nine, two thousand nine oh nine next to it.
What are you looking at?
What, where, what line are you looking at?
I'll tell you what, easier to go to, you guys continue, and I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll find it, we'll come back to it, so I'll go up.
Is it five one six?
It's probably throughout the budget.
Right.
'Cause I don't have anything in five one six that says cybersecurity. Sure you're not looking at insurance?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Oh, cyber liability, oh no, that's insurance.
Cybersecurity, yeah, cyber liability, something else. So, Andy, on Andy's sheet, it's the second to last one.
Are you gonna bring that sheet up, Andy, or do I need to go get mine?
Uh, just give me a second.
Okay. Now, did Andy say that could come out?
The RMM software on Andy's spreadsheet that he gives you for the budget.
Has been removed.
Has been removed.
Okay. But then to us...
We don't need it, the cost of it's brilliant, so I'm trying to figure out what Tim's talking about.
Okay, I'll get you.
Okay, here's what Tim and I went over with Andy. So we have the thirteen hundred coming out here, Western Energy. Then we have the five fifty coming out for the SSL certificate, 'cause that'll be included with our new Granicus product. And then, RMM software, thirty-one twenty.
That has already been removed, at least that's what Tim says, I'm, I'm gonna look, 'cause I don't remember.
Yeah, if you do a Ctrl F on your new report, you won't find RMM anywhere.
That's good. So where's the cyber...
And that's probably because Andy already told you that in advance, when he knew that that was gonna be covered by a grant.
When he was standing here, that's when I know I made some changes to his, his information. But where, where's the cyber?
Yeah, yeah, hold on, let me find it. Again, don't, don't wait on me, I'll, I'll listen and find it.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
You have any questions, Julian? Rex? I had one, and it's, well, you've answered the one, about the hundred and eleven thousand. I wanna make sure that's where we were. The other thing that, it is, I just hate the word miscellaneous, where we have miscellaneous revenue, and it's one point two million dollars. Why is that called miscellaneous?
Because the state chart of accounts does not have a category for those items underneath that.
That just seems like a big number to have miscellaneous, I get it.
Well, you've got your transfers from reserve in there, that's why it's so big.
I just, I, all my life, whenever I saw miscellaneous, flags went up, and I was like, you know, and especially if it's like the second biggest item in the revenue.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just because the very...
That's just no, no chart of accounts for that.
Is, exactly.
Okay.
I mean, there is, but no main category, I guess you wanna call it.
Okay. Like I said, I just want to confirm, I wanted to confirm that one hundred and eleven, five eighty-six.
Yeah, that's still the surplus.
And that's still there, but it looks like it's moving.
And, and the generator is gonna be a big expense.
Right.
That is not gonna be a small expense.
Right, I got it.
For some reason, something's telling me fifty thousand, but I won't swear to that. Depends on the size of the generator, I mean, you're talking for PD, plus the transfer switch, plus the electrical contractor that needs to be hired for all that, so I, I hope I'm wrong.
And you don't have a tank buried over there cheap, do you, like a gas tank or any of them? 'Cause that's, I had to bury five hundred gallons of gas down in my yard.
These are all, the ones we have right now are all diesels, with just their own... Oh, no, they got their own tanks on.
Oh, they do?
Right.
Yeah, they're on the bottom, and they sit on top.
Super.
We'll make these contracts once a year.
I mean, do I sound out of line when I, when I say about fifty thousand for everything?
I would say that's pretty accurate, 'cause it does get expensive when you go to diesel, and you've got the other infrastructure.
Right.
I'm guessing I'm not a contractor.
You're gonna put numbers together.
Something in my gut is saying...
Because if we get one through surplus, that's gonna take the generator off, you know, that'll lower that a lot.
That'll take the generator off?
If we can get one through surplus, that'll lower the cost.
We still have to pay for surplus, we, we still pay for surplus property.
Right, but I'm saying...
Let's, now you got my list.
Right.
Ten thousand dollars instead of fifty thousand.
Right.
The switches are, I mean, I put a switch in my house, and those are pretty expensive to...
So, we think, do we think we can get a number within a week for the transfer switch?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think a transfer switch ought to be the basic cost, and it's just gonna, cost is gonna be what the electrician charges to put it in.
Right. Right, yeah, so we're looking for the whole kit and caboodle. The parts and like...
I figured if you just get an electrician in there now.
Right, right. Okay, so if we don't have it in a week, maybe we'll take a look at, I can go online and see what it costs for a transfer switch, or a generator.
I need a transfer switch.
I just need a number for the budget though. Wherever you get that from, it's fine by me.
And you, Ken, just came up with about eight, forty-five hundred dollars of stuff that you adjusted on that IT, five and all or so.
Forty-five?
Yeah, it was thirteen hundred, five hundred and fifty, and three thousand.
Three thousand, yeah. And what, did you find that other line item?
No, actually, I'm not, when I did it, Ctrl F on cyber, I bet I picked up that cyber insurance.
Yeah, I'm sure you did, 'cause I don't recall anything else identifying as cyber.
I apologize, I'm not showing that one, Jan.
Okay.
I think it was a cyber insurance, so I think I'm picking up.
Okay.
Okay, so then, that's more of this.
Okay. So, you know, we're up to one hundred and eleven, one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and sixteen thousand surplus, so...
I'd say half of it's probably gonna be this generator stuff.
Well, I, I'd hate to not plan for that.
I get it.
So really, you know, I'm really looking for direction with the millage rate. Unless the generator comes in a lot less, but you all aren't gonna be needing again to give me direction on a millage rate. Till the first public hearing, and I have to prepare documents, I have to at least get prepared.
What surplus number are we going to use?
Well, Wally had mentioned if, if the surplus came in at about a hundred thousand, to keep it. Right now, I'm a little over a hundred thousand, and, and if it's a big generator expense, figure seventeen thousand, and I'm just throwing this out there, I don't know. So, is that something you're thinking about giving back to the taxpayer? I, I...
I can give you my opinion.
I gave my opinion the other night, you wanna give yours? You weren't here.
No, but I, I listened, you know.
After you all give your opinions, I have something I'm gonna show you.
Okay.
Okay.
My opinion is we need to take this budget to the bone, we've found a lot of things in this budget, and if we do cut it too close to the bone, I'd rather, anything that raises this head, I don't see being too ugly. We do have accounts, we don't like touching for emergencies, but I think in this situation, to figure out where we, where we really are, and let things expose itself by cutting it down to the bone. We have safety, that we do have money that we can get in, we need ten thousand, if we cut it too close to the bone. And give the surplus, adjust the milli, give the surplus back into the millage, and, and only take from the taxpayers exactly what we need to ta, take, and then figure out what that does to us this year, 'cause I just don't see anything in here that's going to break the bank that comes along that we haven't figured, that we haven't figured out in this budget. And then reevaluate next year based on anything that has raised this head.
Being a surplus in a road reserve still takes the budget down to bare bones, because that money is in a reserve.
I'm sorry, say it again.
That money is in a reserve, not touched for anything, so you're still taking your budget to bare bones.
I, I don't like the idea right now of making, we don't have road plan right now, we gotta get into the program to see what our next road plan is. I don't like taking taxpayers' money and put it in a government savings account, I think it belongs in the savings account, and I'm not here for a political speech. I think it belongs in the person's saving account that got up and earned the money. And government bank accounts, all five of us could quit next week, get a new one in here, and with, with the three-person vote, that money will come out of a road account, and can go into whatever pet project anybody wants to do. I think the safest thing is give back to the taxpayers. Again, we'll see what raises this ugly head, if anything does, see how accurate we are with our budget. We have plenty of safety net with the accounts that we have, and revisit next year based on what, what happens.
Okay, so you're saying take, if I'm hearing you, take the hundred and ten, eleven thousand, whatever it is, give it all back to the taxpayer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is... Mendoza?
I don't have a comment right now.
You have one?
I'm just listening to everybody right now.
All right, Brett?
I really don't have a comment on that either. You just have to, the money's all, the money's all there, it's just a matter of, you know, it's, it's in the account whether it's in, whether it's allocated to something or not, but the money is there to run the government, and so I do kind of agree with Tim, but my question is, is it, how much are we actually giving back, like, per month to people to where, is it gonna make a significant difference, or is it just gonna be like a few pennies or something?
I have a schedule that shows that.
Right, but since you're asking me the question, if you're looking at me, okay, I don't care if it's fifty cents myself.
Oh, okay.
Because we nickel and dime, everybody nickels and dimes insurance and everything, oh, it's only gonna be this much more. Taxes only this much more, gas is only this much more, groceries any much more, okay? At some point, we can keep going down that never-ending road, or we can turn that, we can put a roadblock at the end somewhere.
Well, I can't believe it, man.
For a million-dollar home, I'm gonna go to the top. For a million-dollar home, the monthly savings would be four dollars and sixty-seven cents a month if we lowered the millage rate to six point oh five, giving back fifty-five thousand dollars of the surplus. I didn't calculate the whole surplus, because we still have a generator to worry about. So, for a million-dollar home, for a five hundred, now this is assessed value, for a five hundred thousand dollar home, it's a dollar eighty-one a month savings. You've got your save, save your home's portability, you know, the three percent, so your assessed value is only gonna increase three percent. That's why it's, it's a small percentage. I do have a schedule where I calculated all the different rates, that's, I figured I'd show you this, and it's relatively small, the tax increase at six point three mils for a, let's go down to a two hundred thousand dollar home, is three dollars and fifteen cents a month. I know, I know personally, I waste that, just waking up in the morning. And for a five hundred thousand dollar home, it's seven eighty-eight a month. For a million-dollar home, it's fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents a month, if we keep the millage rate the same. So it's rela, it's relatively small, but, you know, it's, it's your decision, but I thought, you know...
What, what was our millage rate last year?
Six point three.
And, and what are we looking at this year?
Six point three is what the budget's prepared at this point in time, and it's a tax increase because property values have gone up. So technically, it's a ten percent increase, which, that's why a million-dollar homeowner, million-dollar assessed value would pay fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents, would pay a hundred and eighty-nine dollars a year more.
So basically, the taxes right now, the way we're set, it's the same as last year, it's just we're trying to decide with the surplus, whether we wanna give them back the extra money, is that right?
Because it's a tax increase.
The millage rate is the same, the tax base, the tax rate, keeping the millage rate the same, will be a ten percent increase that people write their check for, for their taxes from last year, and that's where I'm going. It's always ten percent here, thirty percent here, year after year, this is what we're told, it's only this, it's only that. I'm gonna go back, I don't care if it's fifty cents, if I got a, I don't get to take the fifty cents from the person that went out there. If we needed it, we would take it. And I, I just, I don't agree with that philosophy, and I think that's what's got us, I'll get up and so on, so...
No, I was curious for the sake of discussion, because, because I heard you say that, that if it went into a road reserve, that another council could come and do something different with it, so... In simpleton terms, I think that if there was surplus money, and that it could go into a road reserve, that it really could benefit the community, because we never have enough to do anything with the roads, and like if we, this is just very simple, that if we accumulated surplus, then potentially down the road, we would have money to do more roads or do more projects, is that, is there holes in this thinking? That the money wouldn't be allocated specifically for that, and that, like, what are the downsides to what Jan has suggested, in your opinion, of creating the road reserve with the surplus?
First one is, we don't have a road project in line, I understand, save up money for a rainy day type thing. But we had money for a police station once, and that money went to green light. We had money in our CRA for roads, that money went to a bathroom. All right, I'm gonna stop right there. We also have accounts where we do have money for roads, we just haven't taken a look at it. So my opinion is, before we take the taxpayers' money, we should have a plan, and we should know everything where we can get funds from, where the funds are gonna be spent, and I don't think doing this for a year is going to make that big a difference for our roads. I'd rather take a, an educated look, do our diligence, and figure out what we're really gonna do with our roads at one time, and go from there.
Thanks for explaining, I appreciate it.
I just wanna ask, you said that, that with what we're doing, it's gonna be a ten percent in, increase in what they pay. Can you explain that to me, just 'cause I don't understand?
Just simply 'cause the, so we stay six-three this, you know, last year was six-three, if we stay six-three this year, property values have gone up, and so six-three millage times our new property values are a ten percent increase in our property taxes. That's why, the whole idea for me is, get the budget accurate, then let's see what our surplus is, and then we can decide what to do with the surplus, and we can decide if there's anything in the budget at this time, now that it's supposed to be accurate. Do we wanna keep everything in the budget, you know, or not? You know, now the other thing is, we've added some things to this budget, and nobody paid it, but I'll look at it. You know, now the other thing is we've added some things to this budget, and nobody paying it, but I will take them. You know, we had a ninety-thousand-dollar expenditure there for a comp plant, okay? Uh, we reduced that by thirty thousand dollars. Um, but we still have stuff in there. We believe that we can do a comp plan review and get moving on that. Um, just went blank. We have a couple other things in there. We got a lot to get our police department moving. You know, so we're making a lot of things move with this budget that has not happened in the past, um, for the city. And we can also, we're getting public works up to speed with getting rid of equipment that they don't use, don't need, costing us money, getting equipment in that they can use. Um, so it's like we're taking care of the city. We're doing everything else. I think we can do a little bit for the taxpayers, too. And I can promise you, I'm not running. There will nothing get me to do this again.
I know, there's gonna be some more things that's gonna pop up with the police.
Oh, there always is, yeah.
And there, and there, I, hopefully soon, uh, we're gonna stop going, this is immediate, this is immediate. But we, I think Ron talked to you there.
Yes, sir.
A couple of things that have just popped up.
Right, but we have safety nets for those.
As long as, I know he talked to you, and as long as you're, you understand what that was, or...
Right.
I think it's a good point to say that we do have some large amounts of money sitting, sitting in places for things, year after year after year. All the money for the police station and all the money for things that have never happened. So I think it's a, I think it's a valid point to say, if we're gonna keep the money, then we ought to be able to tell the taxpayers what the project is and that we do have a plan to get it done. So I can appreciate it from that vantage point, and the fact that, um... Things have been, you know, things have taken a turn with the council and your ability to go through it so carefully that we never saw councils do in the past. I think a lot of councils, I know publicly the last council said, wow, it's hard to understand this. I'm really not sure. So just having someone who's kind of an expert on the budget, who's spent tons and tons of time, lends a lot of credence to me to really evaluate what you're saying.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
One other thing that we have not been able to address in this budget, um, that I would like for council to consider, at least maybe allocating a certain amount of money. I don't know how you would want to, to approach this. But Wally had asked for a salary study back a while back that was gonna cost us around five thousand dollars, and we did not do that. And subsequently, we took care of the police department, and we took care of public works, and we haven't looked at any of the administrative staff as far as salaries. And I've started to analyze that myself just by reaching out to other cities and doing my old sort of informal evaluation of what other cities are paying for certain positions. And Tim and I talked about this last week, and I was hoping to try and have some sort of estimate pulled together. Um, but it, it's just, it's a lot to, you know, data entry into a spreadsheet and formulas and analyzing things and looking at things and going, does this really make sense? And actually taking those numbers and applying them in real time to real-life positions, 'cause, as in all cities, you know? What, uh, you know, uh, a records clerk might do in another city might not be exactly what our records clerk does in our city, you know? So, um, without having necessarily the ability to go and look at all their job descriptions, just trying to use some common sense and, um, and look at that stuff, uh, to, to, to make sure that we're taking care of everybody and not just groups of people. And, 'cause it does make some people feel a little bit undervalued. So I, I would like to ask the council to at least consider setting aside a little bit of money so that I can bring you something back to consider, um, if, if we need to make some adjustments.
Didn't you see us being able to get together and work out some numbers, so we're just not throwing numbers in? That was a question. When you... I know we ain't gonna do it week after week. We just haven't gotten there.
Yeah. Um, and, and have you had a chance to look at what I sent you at all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get together this week if you want.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Would this be a study that would be done internally, or, 'cause I know someone came and talked to us about it, right? And then there's a lot of confusion about what would be taken into account when we looked at the salary study. Um, is this something that would be done internally, or we would be looking at using the money that you're suggesting we put in the budget to contract someone to do the job?
No, this is something, um, honestly, and I think I've said this before, I wasn't real comfortable doing internally because of subjectivity and, and things like that. I mean, it kinda puts me in an awkward position. But if council is not going to fund the salary study, then I, I just took the initiative to go ahead and do it. To try and do something internally, to try and make some recommendations.
Which is exactly what we did with the police, which is exactly what we did in the public works. We have all the information. You know, we would take some of these outside numbers. We're gonna take them. We're gonna find out they don't include this, they don't include that. We're gonna be back to doing it anyways. And, um, I think we've learned a lot, especially when we sat down with, um, George and doing the police and all that. Um, we've already got a start on it, which is basically, uh, you know, Mandy is awkward because of her position. I agree so. I can promise you, I'm not awkward.
Well, I appreciate you, I, you know, I know you do tons of her behind-the-scenes and I always update on it, so that's helpful for me to know that.
Do you have an idea of how much you would, you would, you would need?
Not even close.
Could we set aside five thousand dollars?
I can't see wasting any time. We, we will have this done probably in a matter of a day if we can just get together.
Are you comfortable with that, or...
Yeah, I just want, before you all decide, you know, if you're gonna give Jan any direction on reducing a millage rate and you're, and you're basing that reduction on what your current surplus is, then I, I just want you to know that I may need some money to try and, and make some adjustments.
Let me ask this question, 'cause I'm confused. Are we setting millage rates tonight?
What I can do is, if I can get the numbers for salary, if that's what, if council's agreeable, just putting that in the budget, I can get it for salaries and the generator. I can take the difference and lower the millage rate by that.
Okay.
As close as I can get. It's not gonna be a one-on-one. We, it's possible the city will keep a little more because I've gotta make the budget work. So I can lower the millage rate to try and make it an even... I can't tell you what that would be.
Let me ask this question, okay? We gave you the information on the generator and, you know, all the electric we need for the police department. The salary for the admin folks in this building, um, sound like a week, within a week is when you need that information. Once you have that information, what officially happens then?
I will adjust the budget and be prepared for the first public hearing. And I can put it out there to, to counsel what the millage could be lowered to.
Okay.
At that point, once I get the figures that I need.
And then the first public hearing is where we actually have to tell you, give you guidance. We have to vote on what we want the millage rate to be.
We will vote.
Okay.
The plan, the ideal plan is when I tell you I can drop it to six, six point six mils. That you're, you're okay with that.
Right.
And that's what all of the documents I'm gonna prepare, that council, um, adopts a proposed, I'm sorry, a tentative millage rate of six mils. And then we go to the second public hearing, and you may tell me to lower it more, and we're gonna have to cut the budget somewhere. So that's, that's what we're looking at. You could tell me to raise it at the, at the first public hearing. Then I have, then we have to pause. I'm not gonna redo all the paperwork.
So... What I'm hearing is we have time for Chad to research. Mike is already on it, uh, the electrical for the fire. And then he present that. If, uh, it's allowable, you and I to sit down and do like we did with the police and public works, try to come up with a number there. And then, uh, once that's done, just like public works and police, we'll present everything. Um, we're just working up the numbers. Everybody votes, yay, no? And then...
I'll work it into the budget.
And what date is the second hearing, Carlos?
Oh, I don't have it.
The twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh. September twenty-seventh.
Now, the, the critical point between the first public hearing and the second, I've gotta prepare an ad for the newspaper. I've gotta get it to, to the Department of Revenue to review, and then we gotta get it published in the Riverland News. Usually I only have two days to do that.
Right.
To do all that.
Right.
So...
So in the first public hearing, you can't really, it's gonna be hard for you to entertain any major changes, so?
No, I, I still can, but...
This is the second public hearing?
The, the second public hearing.
It's over.
Once the second public hearing's over, you've got your budget.
Okay, so it's the first public hearing. After the first public hearing, any changes, you basically have two days to get everything official.
Get all incorporated and an ad done and to the Department of Revenue to review my ad. So that I can show we're in compliance.
Okay.
And then they have, they don't turn it around in a day. It's usually a day or two. They get it as quick as possible. But we advertise in the Riverland News, so...
Well, the first public hearing's on the thirteenth.
Okay.
You have to have your ad to the Riverland News by the fifteenth to get it published on the twenty-second, prior to your final public hearing on the twenty-seventh. They have to have it a week in advance, so you probably should have your ad ready the week before. Um, with your proposed rate.
Department of Revenue's not gonna turn it around that quick.
The only other option you have is to publish it in the O'Callister banner, which is gonna be a lot more spent.
A lot more money. I may have to do that. If we can't, you know, settle on a millage rate at the first public hearing, 'cause I could get it to the Department of Revenue ahead of time, get them to review it. They're not concerned with the budget numbers. They're concerned with the trim process. And that my ad conforms to trim advertising. So...
So, let me ask you this.
I can, I can go ahead and send it to them with a six-point, whatever I come up with, millage rate. And then, of course, the numbers will just fall, 'cause they're looking at format. So I think I can be okay, as long as I can get my ad to the Riverland within two days.
I, I, I think you should just be able to send it to them and get it approved as far as format.
Format, yeah. I can, I can go ahead and do that. It's because we changed the, the days.
But even if you, even if the council said today, um, balance the budget at six, at six mils. And you prepared an ad, we came back on the first, uh, public hearing at six mils. You can lower it even further before the second public hearing.
Oh, absolutely. You can't go higher.
I'm just saying, you could go ahead and give her a direction and say, we're not going over six mils. You balance the budget at six mils, and that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna come back with at that first public hearing. Is a, a budget that is balanced with six mils. And then if we see that you've still got eighty thousand dollars left, and you can reduce it even further, then you say, okay, we're gonna reduce it to, you know, five point nine, or whatever the case may be. But that does at least give us some clear direction on what to advertise, but I'm just saying, that's an option.
And, and that's okay. I don't think you need to, to give me a millage rate right now. I think, let's get the figures in the budget, 'cause it's gonna be low regardless. You know, we're not gonna keep it at six point three, 'cause it doesn't sound like we need to keep a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um, now whether it's half, where fifty thousand needs to stay in the budget and fifty thousand goes back to the, the taxpayer, that would reduce it to about six point oh-five mils. Does that make sense? Does that sound acceptable, pretty acceptable? 'Cause we should have all the numbers in, if we can, within a week or so. Don't push it out too much longer. Um, and, and then we'll come in with, really, at that point, unless you want us to cut the budget elsewhere, you can tell us where you wanna cut, it, the millage probably would not go lower.
Yeah, uh, uh, just for conversation's sake, many times I've been through this and stretch out items. I, myself, no longer see any cuts happening in the budget.
Okay, so...
We got a couple, uh, expenditure items that we have to work out. Um, you know, plus, once you input the few thousand bucks we talked about today.
Right.
Uh, we'll see what differences are.
And, and whatever that difference is, that's what I will try and get as close to lowering the millage rate. Like I said, it may still be to our benefit by a thousand dollars or so, but it's just how the numbers work.
No looking to split hairs, just, uh...
Yeah, but, but, so I should be able to lower it, and I'm kinda guessing at about six point oh-five mils, which would reduce it about fifty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. That would go back to the taxpayer.
And what percent increase would that be on the actual?
Six point two-seven. Oh, no, wait a minute, yeah, six point two-seven is what it would show. But the six point two-seven, when I say fifty-five thousand, that's 'cause we budget ninety-five percent. Okay, 'cause of early pay.
Right.
So it's a six point two-seven percent increase because these, these numbers are presented to the taxpayer at a hundred percent.
Right.
So it's not quite six point two-seven, but it's not much less. But I have to look at what, what's in the budget. What can we reasonably expect? Now, one thing keep in mind, these, all these dollar estimates on revenue are es- are just, what I said, they are estimates. It doesn't mean they're gonna come in like we've estimated. They could come in less.
Right.
Um, chief might not be able to issue citations. Now, his, his revenue is only eighty-eight hundred, but if he can't really issue citations, that takes a few dollars away from everything else that it wants.
Correct.
The same thing with copy, uh, people that pay for copies and record searches. Cemetery, well, that's gonna, that difference is gonna come from a reserve, so that doesn't count. Um, all our other excise taxes, the communication service tax, if that comes in even less than thirty-one thousand. So it is a crapshoot, but it's something that we deal with every year.
Right, right.
So if you're in agreeance, I can, we can, I can get the rest of the numbers and prepare a millage rate for you. I'll put it out there ahead of time, uh, ahead of the public, first public hearing. I'll be able to get a more accurate budget posted to the website before that public hearing. Um, if, if you're agreeable to that, so you're, you are looking at a millage rate decrease, just kinda not knowing exactly how much. And then Mandy, you know, you, you all would give me something for salaries. And at least that would be in the budget, even if, for some reason, maybe through further discussions, you don't wanna move forward with the salary increase, but at least it's prepared.
No, the intent is to get them in the salary, just the way we have every, I'm sorry, to get the salaries into the budget, the same way we have the police in there, the same way we have public works in there.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's meant to get into the budget.
Okay. Okay.
It does have to be, it, it does have to be through, um, I mean, we've, we've made some adjustments that the, um... What we're looking at, what we don't want to do is just keep making salary adjustments and not adjust our ranges in our salary plan. So you've got to look at both, and that has to come back to council through a resolution. So you don't want to just keep, you know, adjust, adjust public works here, adjust police here, adjust this here, and not address the salary plan as a whole through your policy. So that would, that would come after.
And would that be in September or later? 'Cause we can get it in the budget. The, the range adjustment could be later if needed.
As long as you get the money that's needed in the budget, the, the resolution, the, the resolution establishing the new ranges can come later.
Yeah. 'Cause you're gonna have a few resolutions to do for the budget. You have a millage rate resolution and budget resolutions, and then there's an extra one for CRA. We haven't even talked about CRA. CRA is pretty cut and dry, though. CRA is easy this year. Sort of. So if you all, if all I'm looking for is a consensus that, that sounds like a plan, unless you have a millage rate you want us to work towards.
I said, let's finish getting up these last numbers and then, um, see what we got. See how it compares with, uh, what we can do with milli-, you know, then we'll know what our true surplus is, and then, uh, come up with a millage rate at that point.
Okay.
And, um... If we had to, I mean, I'm not for more meetings, but if we had to, it's not that big a deal to put a small meeting like this together. It's not like we have attorney costs and all that. We can do it. You know, we do it at like four o'clock, and we don't have to keep staff over and all that kinda stuff either.
Do we have time to fit in our meeting if we need to?
We got all this done this week.
Oh, yeah, we've got time. Okay.
Can I say something?
Absolutely, you're the chair.
I, I agree with what you're saying. Um, first, we need new generators, switches, whatever. Let's find out what it costs. Reduce, or add them to the budget, reducing the surplus. I guess I've been asleep all during this, 'cause I thought the staff budgets, salary were adjusted. That's the first I've heard, that they weren't adjusted. I thought they were. So you absolutely adjusted. So, you absolutely adjusted whatever we gotta do, and however we gotta do it.
Well, we took it, we did take into account back in July, whenever we adjusted public works. Um, we, back in July, we adjusted public works, and we adjusted anybody that was under fifteen.
Right.
And we took and applied some of that same logic to some other positions that we knew should be affected if we were affecting those individuals that we adjusted July.
Well, let's finish that, I'm sorry, because that must've been where I got off. Because I thought, we didn't do a study, but I thought that we did an adjustment, so that's not. But what I'm trying to say is, let's figure out these, these generators. Let's get this salary, whatever it is, I mean, if it's ten thousand dollars or eight thousand dollars, I wanna know what we gotta do to get it fixed. Add these together, reduce our over amount now.
Sure.
And I would say drive the mileage based on that, just like you said. But, I think we gotta get all this in.
Sure, and, and it'll probably still be a mileage rate decrease, I mean, we got a hundred thousand dollars to make.
Well, that's what, I'm hopeful we will, but I wanna make sure we don't leave something hanging. That all of a sudden we get to October and go, oh dang, what we did. But I, I'm like you, Tim, I think, I know you've beaten this thing to death, and, and I tried to look at it from a big picture logical, does, does the movement in the money in different departments in different places, does it, we got a reason for it. And, once I got there, I'll let you handle all that nitty gritty detail, which you're good at. But no, I, I feel like this is a good one. I, I think we have gone through it and found things that, we're in here a couple of times, and some things weren't in there that needed to be in there, and we got. But I'm not so worried that the budget we got, we're gonna find some major surprise six months into next year. I, I don't think it's gonna be there. Uh, we may find a few bucks, but not anything big. One other thing that I had thought about in going through all this, I had totally forgotten it, but I just remembered it. I would like to know, and I know you do this every year, because when I was sitting out there, I used to, you'd show it, all the different reserves that we have.
Sure, and I show you that every, every financial.
Well, I know you do, and, and what I'm trying to say is, and I know we're not at the end of the year, so we don't know, but get with whatever latest you got, let's try to figure out where are these different reserves. Because like I said, we've got this reserve for the police department, we've got different reserves.
I'll estimate.
And you add all, because I'm not really concerned about all that, I'm concerned about the unallocated reserves, how much that, I'm sure.
What I'll do is, I'll take it as of our latest, um, estimate. I'll take what I'm projecting through the remainder of the year, which really is a guess at this point, because there's been so many changes.
Right.
You know, and so, and there could be some excess monies due to still some vacancies. I mean, it's really hard for me to judge.
That's all on the move, I get it.
I would rather take and say, okay, we're gonna spend this, this year, and take this new budget, figure in, in the reserves and, and the expenses, and see if I can give you my best estimate for where I think the reserves will be.
Sure.
At least at the end of next year.
That's what I'm really looking for, is okay, okay, we got, we've got a road reserve, we've got a police reserve, we've got all these reserves. And I know we keep them and we roll them forward, but the only one I'm concerned about is the unallocated. Because if it gets too small, I'm gonna get nervous, but if it's not too small, I'm gonna be okay.
Well, right now, it's pretty big.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. See, yeah, I mean, I don't, you, you know these numbers better than I do, but what I'm trying to say is, I feel like that reserve is fluctuating all over the place this year, but it's still a pretty good reserve. And as long as we get there, I don't mind cutting this thing all the way to the bottom, just like you. That's what I, sure.
I have a question with the out and left field, that maybe I should have asked like three years ago, but I'm gonna ask it now. And it will show that I have not looked at the plan by line, so I'm gonna admit that, I'm very truthful. Uh, the special magistrate, is that anything that needed to be put in the budget and is it?
It is.
It's in there.
It's in there.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, I'm good.
Not, not unlocked.
We just gotta get started, we just gotta get started.
But yes, there is, I wanna say thirty-seven hundred allocated to special magistrate. Hang on one second, I should've detailed that out.
Just don't take away all her comp plans, she'll be happy.
It's not, I know who sits that close to me.
Yeah, thirty-seven hundred dollars to special magistrate.
But we just need to get a start, yeah, yeah. Like I was a little taken aback when I heard that, um, public plan money was dropped, but yeah, we just need to get a start.
It wasn't dropped, it was lowered.
Well, I just wanna start, that's.
Okay. I'm good. So, I think y'all got some direction.
I got direction.
All right.
Then we're gonna do CRA, but.
Fingers rickety tick, we're good.
Okay.
Uh, CRA, well, CRA, I kinda, I left, I left the restrooms in there. As far as monies that we spent, uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. There's also, we also increased the grants that we give to, um, the property owners. We, we basically doubled that to a hundred thousand dollars. I think there was a little misunderstanding with the word grant, because it's really up to the department his discretion, how much they put into those two line items to be able to give out over the course of the year. Um, I know Kelly is working on, um, revising the grant policy, so I think that'll come into play, but, um, for grants, there will be a hundred thousand dollars available.
Can I ask a question about that? So I heard you say that we doubled the money. What was the, like, demand for the grants? Did we double the money based on the fact that we had so many requests that we couldn't accommodate them?
No, based on policy revision. And how much a, a, a property owner could get up to. Because in, in one of the policies, a property owner can get up to twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't know the rest of the, the verbiage, but can be reimbursed up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So, now if this money doesn't get spent, it stays in the pot. Only earmarked.
Did they change it from just the historic district?
To make it citywide, yes.
Good, because that was the one thing, I warned, I hope they did.
And that, that was the policy to begin with?
Oh, I know, I know.
Okay, so.
So right now, it's five thousand dollar grants, so you can apply for the grant, and you put your money out, and the city reimburses you, right?
It's really more than that, it can be more than that, it's just Georgina presented that as a way to maybe get more people interested. Let's start with the historic district, let's give out five thousand dollars, but the policy allowed for more than that.
Right.
And, and I guess that's been, still been in play, the five thousand dollars.
So I'm sure we could see people coming in and asking for grants that are much higher. And so if somebody wanted a twenty thousand dollar grant, would it be the same thing that they would put their twenty thousand dollars in?
Oh, oh, absolutely, it's reimbursed.
Okay, and then, remind me of the, um, I know, I mean, I've heard those go through the historic board. Do they all go through the council as well?
They go through the CRA board.
The CRA board, good enough, thank you.
Yeah, the historic board has say-so over the historic district.
Right, I, yeah.
And, and so I can see it going before them to make sure that the colors are right, or, or the materials that are used. I'm not sure of the criteria, but I can see the historic board, you know, still having a say-so in those. But, a, any, anywhere else in the city, it's gonna be the CRA board.
So if it's a grant request for CRA in the historic district, or a grant request for CRA outside of the historic district, they both come to the council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
CRA board has final say-so.
Very good, thank you.
Um, so in addition to increasing the grant funding, I've put in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar contra, city contribution for the multimodal, um, um, road reconstruction out on four eighty-four that we're committed to with the county, to put in a bike path and make that road real pretty and
Flub on the parking.
Real pretty, um, yeah, and eliminate parking. Um, but I put that in here as a grant and aid to a government agency, because that's really what it is, we're giving the county money. So, the, the CRA, the revenue, um, it is a balanced budget. The budget is at eight hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Tax money, new tax money coming in will be four hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And that's a pretty close, almost exact write-off figure. Because it's based on the county mileage rate and the city mileage rate. Now, if we decrease our mileage rate, that will decrease. That'll decrease the city contribution, yes. Uh, but that, and that money is CRA's as of December thirty-first. When the property appraiser certifies the final taxable values, these numbers do not change that much. And I have a transfer in from reserve to balance the budget and fund all the expenses of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So that's taken from the existing CRA pot to help fund this budget. So it's, it's pretty, pretty clean.
Right.
The only project is the restrooms, and I can either leave that in, take it out. If you prefer to take it out temporarily, you can, you can always amend the budget to bring it back in after discussions with the county, or we can leave it in, if it doesn't get spent, it stay, it just stays in the pot.
I don't like the number, but I say we leave it in, just to be careful and be conservative. And I, I hope it changes, but I don't wanna take it out and then have to remember to put it back in. Let's just leave it in there, and we'll adjust it when we adjust it.
And it doesn't even have to be adjusted?
No, I, I get it, I'm just joking, but, um.
If you don't spend it, it just, it stays there. You can assign it to another project if you want to during that, you know, you're looking, you're like, oh no, we're not gonna do this. But you could, if something came up in CRA, that money's in the budget, you don't have to amend the budget, you can just spend it.
Got it. Okay. We all good?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I was waiting on you.
So I'm getting finished.
No, I can see Tim was chomping at the bit.
Okay, I'm sorry, Tim.
That's not, no, I didn't need to go first. My first question is, we probably owe you answers, Jan. When can we start investing CRA funds in CDs? We've got eight hundred thousand dollars here, we're losing out on them.
I could start. I could start tomorrow. Um, I would be comfortable even just taking two hundred thousand. You know, I can call Brandon Bank and say, I wanna invest two hundred thousand dollars of the CRA money. Since, since you have the multimodal project, since, since we have, December, you'll have all your new money. Between October and December, you won't be spending a lot of money on just operating expenses. So I could even take five hundred. Um, I wouldn't wanna take more than that, because that's about half the, half what's in there now. So I could see investing five hundred thousand dollars, because again, Brandon does let us liquidate, and if we needed a portion of it, we could liquidate just a portion of that and keep the rest, um, um, invested at four point five.
Four point five is the money market, four point seven five was the CD.
I, I, I.
Which to me, if we, if we put it in the money market right now, at least, then you probably got.
I can't, that's co-mingling general.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Could I open up another money market? The money market's fluctuating. I'd rather, I'd rather put a CD, even a three-month CD.
Right, okay, do a three-month CD.
Just a three-month, you don't wanna do six months?
But where are we, where in?
This is August, September, October, November, December, February.
Three months, I think, is enough.
But six months will take us to February.
Why don't we do half and half? Do half the money in six months and half the money in three months? What I'm concerned about is if they start spending money on this road and need some money. Bathroom ain't gonna start.
It's a three hundred and fifty. Uh, um, mm, okay.
What, how much you say, we had about a million?
We have, we have a million dollars today.
Well, then, I just put it in six months. We got enough money.
Okay, so I'll take five hundred thousand, because three fifty is the road project.
Right.
So that still leaves a couple hundred thousand, not counting new, not counting the new money that's gonna be in December.
Right, now, let's go ahead and do six months.
Okay, so five hundred thousand at six months, okay.
Good question, Tim.
Okay. And that you'll see in the CRA portion of any financial report that I give you. So you'll see three reserves then, I'm sorry, you'll see two bank accounts in CRA, where you only see one now.
Okay. Blue Run Bathroom. If I had my way. We would honor the original thirty thousand dollars. The rest of it would go, stay in CRA and go towards roads and streets in the CRA district.
Now, of that thirty thousand, eighteen has already been spent.
No, I, no, what I'm saying is, we will honor the original thirty. If there's five dollars left of it, we still owe five bucks. No more, so whatever we have spent, minus the thirty, that's, would be our obligation, that was our original obligation. The other two hundred, whatever the number is after the thirty, I think should go to CRA roads and streets. Uh, and, and there's a few reasons. One, there's just too many issues around this bathroom to see anything happening there. Once I discovered, there's conversations that the takeout is very likely, well, I'm not trying to figure out which government's gonna get along, that there are really talks, serious talks going on between the state and the county, just right now, they're can't come into agreement with some terms, the way I understand it. Uh, but it looks like it really may happen, that they're going to, uh, move that takeout further north. So that puts a whole different spend on this bathroom here.
I think you need to look at your CRA plan, if there's talk about amending the plan, you've got roads in that plan. I don't know if they're the same roads that would still be repaired. That plan is very old, that's the original plan that I'm talking about. So, um, I can see it going toward roads, but I think you, you may wanna take a look at your plan, and maybe, I, Chad maybe would wanna identify different roads.
Here's the only reason I'm saying, maybe I'm not following you, but the only reason I'm saying CRA, my understanding is, this money towards the bathroom is CRA funds.
That's correct.
So the only place it can be spent is CRA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, if you don't do the bathroom project, because the roads that are already identified in the plan are so old, as far as what was identified way back in nineteen ninety-nine.
Right, but now we have a new mapping system.
Right, so that's where you may want to amend your plan to focus on different roads. Or those same roads take on a higher priority.
Okay.
And in that plan, if I remember correctly, there are dollar amounts associated with those roads. All dollars, probably way, way wrong. So you may wanna associate different dollar amounts with the roads, and you can, you do a plan, you can amend it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mandy, probably at any time, it's just an internal, um, thing that we do. And maybe cost change, they don't, the plan doesn't hold you firm to the, to the cost that you put in.
So do we have, we have to have this plan in place already before we can take, because there's, there's no plan for the bathroom, and we got money sitting over there in the bathroom.
We do, and the plan was amended for that bathroom. If it's not in the plan, you can't spend it. You can have a project.
It's in the CRA plan, gotcha.
Yeah, you can have a project to, I'm just throwing this out there, to redo City Hall, if that was acceptable. If it's on the plan, you can't do it.
I see.
So, that's where, I know you had wanted to take a look at that plan, so maybe, you know, over the next year, you take a step back and you look at the plan, and we can identify roads and, and put it to good use.
Okay.
Uh, so it can be done.
We just gotta do something with the CRA, with the CRA plan.
Yes, and like I said, there are roads in there, so you could go ahead and still do roads. But the one road Chad wants may not be in there.
We'll put it in there.
I'm looking at the most recent CRA plan amendment, and I don't see roads in here in the Table Seven Plan redevelopment projects. There's nothing in here for roads.
Well, if you go back to the original, there is.
Well, it's been amended.
So the takeout roads?
In the most recent plan, yeah, Blue Run Park. In the most recent plan, yeah, Blue Run Park, signage, the one twenty-fifth anniversary park, which is a no-go. So that needs to come out. The West Penn Streetscape Project, which I think has already been completed, parking enhancements, and that could be. I mean, parking enhancements were, that was used for Ernie Mills Park and Short Tower Way. But you could identify other areas in the CRA where you wanted to make parking enhancements and then the bike path.
So that amendment would have taken the road section completely out?
It's out of the table.
Are there multiple tables, there, there are multiple tables in the original plan?
There are the other sections in here that speak to roads, but as far as projects that are identified in that table, that's what it's showing.
I think you have to look at the whole plan. Now, I don't know, but there were different sections in the original plan. And there were a lot of roads listed, from what I recall. I haven't looked at the plan in quite some time.
I think we need to pull it down and take a hard look at it and clean it up and nothing else.
Because you can even probably do some generic projects, like park enhancements is generic. Does that mean a playground?
Right, I really like to put it in roads and streets. It's rather than just try to make up something so we got a place to set the money.
Sure.
I'd really like to put the money into the roads.
And I like the idea of planning a project for the CRA money. I think it's been a long time since an appropriate project has been presented and planned. And I'd love for this council to be able to do something appropriate with CRA money. Like the roads, because the bathroom isn't, you know, it's not really benefiting how we're going to improve that district. So, and Andrew said that, you know, he had talked about amending that plan, and he said that was pretty simple. So I think we can just get that on an agenda. I know parking improvements in the historic district was a, is on the plan. And with all the talk that we had done about parking, I know in the past, there was an idea about parking meters. So I don't know if that's, you know, just something for everyone to sort of think about as something to use the CRA money for that could have potential revenue and could also help us with this problem of where people are parking and all the problems that we have there.
It's good for thought.
I do know the old life club is up for sale yet.
I know.
We're getting rid of buildings, we ain't buying buildings.
Well, no, no, it's thinking parking. I'm thinking so much the building, I'm thinking parking. Just thought, I don't, I know at one point, the city could have had it for fifty thousand. I don't know what he's selling it for now.
There may be business owners who are interested.
Oh, and I know what it's selling for.
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Now, why call me today?
Okay. Well.
The old life club.
You want a community center? There is a building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, yeah.
Advertised as having, as being able to park nineteen cars. I'm not sure if that's.
Oh, I don't, I don't know how new cars can park.
Yeah.
I just know when Troy was looking at it, he, he was basically looking at knocking down the building and making that area apart.
There may be business owners who are interested in doing that.
Oh, oh, yeah. There was, but.
So, do we not have any place that we can park this extra Blue Run Park money to get it out of that line item? I, I, myself, I don't want it sitting in the budget because too many documents say, as funding is available, we will do this. Okay, so one of the things, besides I want to use the, you know, I don't agree with the bathroom, I don't agree with the, what the residents, taxpayers are going to get from that bathroom for that kind of funds. We do know our roads, you know, the surveys, they want roads, they're not, when you ask the bathrooms, parks, all that. But when I go through the documents, okay, many of the documents for Blue Run Park Bathroom say, as funding is available. If we're sitting there with three hundred, two hundred and twenty K in our budget, okay, that bothers me that somebody could come along and say, funding is available. I'm saying funding is not available because we need our roads, we do not need that bathroom in place of roads.
We can just let it fall to the bottom line. And you know that generic saying, generic sentence I have for parking enhancements, I can add roads.
Miscellaneous.
It's just, it's, it's basically, it is, that it really is a miscellaneous line, it's a lump sum. That, that right now has, and I, I'm sorry I don't have it, maybe I should have prepared the budget summary after all, but I think there's maybe four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that has just fallen to the bottom.
Well, it's got a bigger number now.
Well, six hundred thousand, is that what you want to move?
My opinion is we will honor the original thirty thousand.
So you want me to put eighteen, keep eighteen thousand dollars?
Whatever the, I don't know the numbers, it sounds like you do.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever we have spent, whatever is left after the thirty, between those two numbers, it should add up to thirty thousand. And that's, the rest would go into the line item you're speaking of.
You won't see thirty thousand, you'll only see the eighteen.
Eighteen, because we've already spent the rest.
Yes, that was spent several years back.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to keep eighteen, I'm going to move a hundred and ninety something, whatever, I'm going to say one ninety-nine to bottom line.
Sounds good.
Wasn't there an additional amount of twenty something?
Yeah, we stuck something in there.
There, there was, but that was just added in, in the lump sum to offer up to the county. That was the one twenty-five park money to twenty-three, four hundred dollars. That was one twenty-five park money.
Right.
That was also included, but that was one twenty-five park money.
Where is it, where is it sitting?
In that two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Would you move everything down except what's left?
So I, I just, I just want to be clear.
Right, right.
That, because when I broke it down, is that meaning, and I showed where the haul and what the, the city originally committed, and then they committed the one twenty-five park money, and then the one seventy-five was a different commitment?
Yes, yeah, it was.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear with Tim, that twenty-four thousand's either going to sit there and stay there, or we taking that out too and just going back to the original commitment.
I'm hearing, take everything out except the original commitment.
Correct.
Not just the one seventy-five?
No.
Correct, everything except the original commitment.
Except eighteen thousand dollars.
Right, now, I understand CRA money has to go back to CRA pot somewhere, the one twenty-five park money.
Oh, that was still CRA money.
That was CRA money also?
That was. The one twenty-five park was a CRA project.
Gotcha, okay.
That was a combination of funds, donations from general funds.
So it can all get parked at CRA?
It is, and the twenty-three four is absolutely CRA money.
Cool. Is it cleaner then?
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, ma'am.
Because there were different amounts at, at different times.
Right, right.
That were, that were allocated for that. So you're saying, just go back, take away the one seventy-five, which was done at this point, and the twenty-three, however much was, was done at this point, and go right back to the thirty minus the twelve.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
I'm just, you're just not going to see that separation in the documents I prepared.
Sure.
You're going to see eighteen thousand dollars and then an increase in the bottom line that we don't have any specific project assignment to.
Cool.
So my question, just communication, that this, because this wasn't anything that we had signed on the dotted line, this is, we're good with the communication piece, right? We, we, there's no reason to communicate that at this point.
We have actually asked for a communication, but we're not getting communicated with. We reached out and explained that the MOU's not, it's been a while now though, Mandy, I don't remember what all we did, but nobody reached out back to us.
It's, yeah, we, we've had it, Andrew has it right now, reviewing it, and he's going to give it to you with his changes and.
Okay.
He's got some problems with it.
Okay, so, actually, it's a very good point, we do need to communicate it, I would think.
Yeah, what, what means?
We should communicate it on, on some level.
Well, I, I have the topic scheduled for your September workshop, so.
We discussed it all then.
And still, you know, I suppose when you're, and I did invite Mr. Cool Yard and Commissioner Bryant to come in September, provided them those dates. So, I mean, it's up to you, I can, I can reach out and let them know that, you know, that money that was allocated in CRA is now being moved. And if this council doesn't agree with funding the bathroom with that money. Or, or.
I'm, myself, I'm all for being forthright, I don't.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
They haven't responded to that September, once we moved that August, because of something, I know, I know we told them about September, but I had never heard of it. Okay. All right, well, I'll reach out to Cool Yard and Kathy again and just tell her we're going to discuss this if they can be there.
Yeah, well, I don't anticipate there being a big change. I guess the factors for me is that we didn't sign on the line, so we don't have an obligation to really leave it hard and fast in the budget. And that if we do have a conversation, should anything change in any way, that it's not as though it's not available.
Right.
Right?
You, you can always amend your budget.
I think it's a good way to show the shifting of priorities, but also leaving room open to communicate with the county and talk to them in a fair manner.
Absolutely.
And I also think that this leads to you needing to, at some point, look at the CRA plan and see what you want to do with that. So I don't know if you want to do something sooner than your regular CRA meeting that's coming up in November? Or if you just want to wait till then and take a, a long, hard look at it then and talk about what you want to see in there?
Can you get the plan, the CRA plan out to all of us to read, whatever the latest version is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good thing for us, I think it hasn't been looked at in a really long time, and I think it would be good to do it as soon as we can.
Yeah.
I would just recommend, if you're going to do it, that you, I know your meetings are normally at five o'clock, you probably want to back that meeting up a little bit earlier. So you, because you're not going to get through a, a good review and discussion of that in thirty minutes.
And it, it's probably going to take several meetings.
Sure.
Right.
The tricky part is how the CRA district is laid out and some of the parts of the community that it encompasses, you know, may no longer really be blighted areas or areas that are really in need. So I guess we can, I'll wait till.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't recommend reducing your area.
I agree, we have to work with the plan carefully to define the projects, since it's a big deal to redefine the area.
And, and roads could be applicable, even just roads. In those other areas that may not need facade improvements or they have, their buildings are fine, excuse me, so it's, I just wouldn't reduce it at this point.
And if we can get the special magistrate going, it might present opportunities for us to use that CRA money when we start to work out some of what's going on with the blight. I think it could be some natural opportunities for CRA projects.
Sure, and, and even for demolition. You know, if you have a blighted property in a CRA area and you want it demoed, I, I believe it can be used for it, I'd have to double check. But, you know, it's, it's worth at least taking a look at.
Yeah, it's going to be a great tool once we get going.
Okay.
Okay, I think I have my direction. So your CRA budget will reduce by almost a couple hundred thousand dollars. Because I'm taking out that one project.
Right.
So the bottom line budget will, will change.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
And then I'm going to invest CRA money for six months in a four point seven five APR CD.
Jim, has the city invested this money in the past?
No.
Oh, so that's really a new thing coming from this council.
Because, you know, there were so many projects planned and with what Georgina was trying to do. And the interest rates weren't like they already were, they were trying to grab. And Brandon hadn't offered up, if you need to liquidate early, we'll let you.
That's the, that's the key.
So there it is, because I was always unsure if.
We got hung up somewhere.
This three hundred thousand dollar project, we got a CD, we're going to lose everything. And possibly even some principal, which I'm under obligation that we can never lose principal. That's a statutory requirement of my job. And if we needed to liquidate a CD, because you liquidate a CD, they may charge you three months' worth of interest or six months. Depending on when that's liquidated, it could even into principal.
Right.
So I was always, you know.
You don't want to do that.
A little nervous to, to take a chance with that, especially with all the projects that Georgina was trying to accomplish, so.
Right, okay.
Times are changing.
Anything else? We good? We good?
Just one question. Do we want to go ahead and try to get something on the calendar for a CRA workshop to talk about the plan? You want to get through budget and then do that in the next fiscal year?
My recommendation would be put it in October. I think we've got enough with this budget in September, personally, but we don't need to wait until November, I think.
We have the short-term rivals.
Yeah, I mean, we got a lot going on. I'd say, you know, we could do a special workshop in October.
In October?
And.
Okay.
Put it in there.
And I do have one correction, I saw I made a mistake on this reconciliation sheet. I show that cemetery, bringing the money in from reserve to balance that budget, I'm about sixteen hundred dollars short. So I have to increase that transfer in to eighteen six.
I saw that sixteen hundred dollars, I'm like, how'd that happen?
I tell you, I have checked to double check, can't check anymore. So I do apologize for that, but I'll make sure I get that corrected.
Jan, you got anything else?
I got one thing, it's kind of a walk-on. Dump truck broke down on us last week, now it's pretty much broke-broke. We have one in the budget, there's presently eighty-five thousand dollars in the budget we're working to right now for a dump truck. We increased that number for next year's budget to ninety-three thousand dollars, because that's the way the quotes were coming in. Chad might have worked with us, somebody in Orlando, they have two of the exact dump trucks that we're looking at. From that, I'll give to, so kind of bring this on on our emergency thing, we're in the middle of mowing season, we got hurricane season coming at us and we have no dump truck. And the good news is, they have found one cheaper, and take it away, Chad.
Yeah, we're, we're in a place where in Orlando, we've got two dump trucks, one's a rack body and one's a dump truck. Five fifty, put bid, dump everything. They come in after city inductions and everything at seventy-nine thousand. And it'd be a little higher than that, because we did ask for the winches to be put on, but everything else is there, which we budgeted last year for eighty-five. So if we's able to get this, this year, under last year's budget, we could still add about fifteen thousand back. Take fifteen thousand off the budget coming up that we budgeted for.
But wouldn't you take the eighty-five off, the not, I'm sorry, the ninety-three out of the budget that's coming up?
Yeah, we, we, last year we budgeted for eighty-five, which was still under last year.
You mean this year? You mean this year, correct.
You mean this, this current?
Yeah, what we're running right now.
Okay.
We budgeted for eighty-five.
Okay.
And next year we pose ninety-four or something, that's all we know.
Okay.
So if we's able to get this, this year.
Well, if.
Under this year's eighty-five, we could take fifteen thousand off our budget.
Would you be able to take, take delivery by September thirty?
It's sitting on our lot, we could pick it up when.
Basically, the only thing stopping that dump truck from being at public works is us approving it.
Okay, so if it's in the budget, as long as we take delivery by September thirty, it would hit this year's budget? So I should basically take that dump truck out of, do we have to go for bid? Or this fall?
It's a bid coming from a hundred and eleven thousand.
Okay.
Ninety-two thousand, seventy-nine thousand.
But I think we have to do sealed. It's a commodity, I'm pretty sure it's a, it's a commodity, we have to do sealed bid.
Do they have a state contract? Do, do you know if this?
Dealer.
Dealer has, does?
It's a dealership, yeah.
But some, some dealerships are under state contract. We can find out if they're under state, I mean, if they, if they honor state contract prices, then we don't have to go.
Right, that's covered, it's covered under piggybacking.
I'll double check, but we, the article, I think that's where the price come down from retail at eighty-two something, they come down to seventy-nine.
They would need to give us the, show us the contract at the state, but yeah, I mean, then we could get it with no, no problem.
Now, you said two dump trucks broke?
No, 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 one, this particular, this particular.
Company had two.
Company, they have.
Oh, okay, that's where I heard it.
Exactly what we want.
Yeah, so then that would, we put that one in the twenty-three budget and take the one out of the twenty-four budget. I remember when we did this now, because we put it both, because we didn't know when it was coming.
So should I take it out of? But if we have to go bid.
Keep it amount, too.
Yeah, we're letting this money know, it's just, it's capital money, so it would, it would be, if it crosses over and ends up staying in the budget, it's no big deal.
Right.
So, okay.
So budget can hang tight, is what we're saying.
Yeah.
But we need physically, we need a dump truck.
Right.
So, Mandy, what do we have to do?
When can we vote on that?
Yeah, that's kind of where.
Middle of September.
It's already in the budget, you already approved it and through the budget process, you've just got to give us your consent to move forward.
Okay.
And the consensus is fine. Normally, we bring it to a council meeting just to get that formal, hey, we're going to buy this truck and, so we can tell you, you know, the procurement method, it's state contract usually, dah, 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 dah.
Right.
But if you've already. But if you've already approved it in the budget, we can, you can do an informal consensus and say, yes, we can authorize that, go ahead and move forward with it.
Because Chad did the whole presentation during one of the workshops when he was going through this budget. This dump truck wasn't one of them. Pickup trucks was another one.
It's same truck that had the announcers come in and comes out on the front.
That's good. Okay.
But we just, we need to double check the purchasing policy and make sure, we need to get with this dealership and make sure it's under state contract. So give us a day or so to do that.
Okay.
And make sure that we don't have to bring it back to you, you know, formally and do anything else. But just give us a day or so to just confirm all that.
If it's not under state contract, they can, if you've got the same dealership, another dealership of the same make it is, they, they will transfer the, they usually can transfer the vehicle over to the other dealership. Because when I bought my van, that's what they did. It was in Jacksonville. They just sent it down there for free, and they just bought it for a lottery.
Well, that state contract would be any dealer.
Oh, okay.
Could participate in state contract. All, state contract means that the state has gone out to bid for a certain commodity or service and obtained the lowest price.
Okay.
And dealers just have to buy in to say, yes, I'm going to give you that price that's on the state contract list.
Right, okay.
So...
That's how we're really going to...
Chad, so Chad will follow up on that? Is that correct, Chad? Okay, and then, Mandy, what do we need to do?
Nothing right now. Just as long as we have your consensus that you want us to pursue this, then we'll make sure that we do everything.
Do we need to make a motion?
The way, no, you can't make a motion.
Can't make a motion.
It's a workshop.
Okay, you have my consensus.
You have my consent.
And then if we need to bring it back, if we're formal, formal approval, if we discover that we do need to do that, but we have to go ahead and move on it, in the meantime, as long as we make sure that we're aligned by our purchasing policies, then we can do that and you can ratify it afterward.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm motion to adjourn.
All right, we got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? On favor?